Thank you. Do we have any public comment on these closed session items? Seeing none, go ahead and adjourn to closed session at 6:36 PM.
Thank you.
Good. Alrighty, we're back from closed session at 7:11 PM. Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report out?
I, Council convene in closed session regarding items C to A, B, and C, and there's no reportable action at this time.
Do we have a invocation or called the responsi-- oh, for, is there a specific?
No, we just, we didn't have anybody for tonight.
Oh, got it. Okay. Alright, so in lieu of invocation or called the civic responsibility, we'll take a moment of silence for a variety of issues. I'm sure you all seen across the country, but if you could just bow your heads for a moment. Thank you. Any of you'll join me for the flag salute?
Ready salute.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bregman. Councilmember Nakaneishi. Councilmember Craig Hensley. Mayor Pro Tempore Hothi.
Here.
Marya Pez. Thank you.
Thank you. First, item B1, presentation of nonprofit allocation check to the Tokay High School Wrestling Boosters. Do we have a check, check? Okay, so if you don't mind coming up to the podium here. This is a request for my nonprofit budget. If you remember, each of us has a $20,000 budget to allocate to various community projects, and you can go to that podium. And for me, I wrestled at Tokay High School. It was one of the most impactful decisions of my life. Coach Rod Gaines used to be, it was, Tokay back then was a powerhouse in the region, and a lot of people went through this program at Tokay, and it changed their lives. And so often in this room, we talk about what to do for youth in this community, and this is it right here. For me, it's, you know, some of the best wrestlers and grapplers and martial artists have come out of Lodi Stockton, and so we appreciate what you guys are doing. And so first, before presentation, I don't know if there's anything you want to say.
First, we want to thank the City Council, oh, is that on? Oh, I want to thank the City Council and Mike Hothi for this check. It's going to help the wrestlers be able to get to places they need and be able to support those that can't afford equipment and can afford travel or food at tournaments. So it's a great blessing for the Tokay wrestling team. So from the coaches to the wrestlers, from the boosters, we are grateful.
Thank you, guys. And we got to beat Lodi.
We did beat Lodi.
Alright, Mikey.
Yeah, they told me I can go in there and wrestle with the kids, so I'm real excited about that. And thanks to Tom Sanchez from Waste Management. This actually was his idea. He's a former wrestler himself, too, so kudos, Tom. Next, consent calendar.
Mayor and Council, tonight we have 10 items on the...
You'll have an opportunity for public comment on the consent calendar. Sure, yep, there's one, right, it's coming up in two seconds.
We have 10 items to submit to Council for your review. There are no blue sheets for tonight, so we submit it for your review.
Got it, okay. And I know we have a recusal on C6 from Councilmember Bregman. Any other items to pull from the council? Seeing none, sir, if you wanted to pull an item, please.
Yes, I'm requesting the consent calendar items C1, C2, C3, C5 through C7 be pulled for separate discussion, please.
Do you have a specific question on these items?
Well, just for transparency and public understanding of procurement and contract amendments, and I can go through each one if you wish.
Sure.
So the first one is the substation maintenance agreement. I understand this is a no-bid, non-competitive contract. My concern is the length of the contract, five years. And if, I'd just like to know what other vendors were, had the opportunity to bid for such a thing. I'm just concerned that without the competitive process, that we will be overspending taxpayer money.
Got it, okay. And questions on C2?
On C2, yes. So this is because the low bidder didn't understand the contract, so he's out, so the contract was awarded to the second lowest bidder. My concern is, based on the percentage difference between the low bidder and the second lowest bidder, my concern is, why not just rebid it out because of the profound difference in the contract or in the bids? So that's that one.
Okay, C3?
C3. So this is regarding the emergency boiler replacement. My understanding is there's two boilers, one boiler. It's been offline for some time, I believe, one year. I think that's been offline for one year. It's been, it's been out of service. Second one, it appears, is out of service. It's already part of the capital improvement projects for 2026. By making this an emergency, you take away the competitive safeguards for taxpayer money. So that's why I'd like that one to be pulled from consent. I'd like to see, I just think we should, we were better off knowing more about that.
Sure. C5?
C5. This is, these are professional service amendments and extensions, C5, 6, and 7. My concern is, at what point do amendments and extensions trigger rebuilding or market retesting? So if you're amending them or extending them, why not open them up to competition?
Sure. And does that round out your questions on these items? Okay, sir, you could go ahead and take a seat, and I'll direct staff when we have the moment. Okay, do we have any other items pulled off of consent? Seeing none, Mr. City Manager, you want to take a stab at this, or should we go item by item department, depending on the department?
So I think if, are there items left that the council wants to approve on the consent calendar? Before we go on the items, and I also wanted to clarify for process that it is the council that can remove items from the consent calendar. And so if you do, or if you are honoring the request to remove the items as requested and take action on the items that you would like to remain on the consent calendar, I'd recommend taking action on those items that remain on consent, and then we're happy to have the staff departments that are responsible for those items that will be discussed that come up and address the questions.
Sure, I'll go ahead and remove the requested items from the consent calendar. And we'll enter, so, can we just go through, and then we'll entertain one motion?
Certainly. So I think for the first item, what I'd like to do is have our electric utility director, Jeff Burkheimer, address the question on the substation.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Hothi and Council for the opportunity. It's a great question. So the procurement policies with the city do allow individual departments for engineering services to do sole-source contracts. That being said, we do not go out and explicitly just handpick an individual company or a contractor to perform these services. Specific to the substation solutions contract, we had reached out to three of the most well-respected and known companies that perform this work, Ressa Power EPS, who is a company that actually the Northern California Power Agency has under contract for their emergency substation maintenance and solutions, as well as Power Pros. After talking with all of these companies and hearing about their pricing and their capabilities, they actually put us into contact with Substation Solutions. This is for annual monitoring and support related to our SF6-filled circuit breakers, where we have some very heavy regulatory reporting requirements around gas leakage and maintenance. At the end of the day, Substation Solutions was not only the most capable company, they were the most cost-effective and the ones able to respond in the timeframe that we needed, as well as provide the reporting support for carb on our annual SF6 reporting requirement. So even though it looks as if it's a non-bid sole-source contract, which it is, there was absolutely vetting of multiple companies relative to who's available in the area.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Might I just follow up? I think I'm compelled by the fact that you do, and I've read the ordinance, you are allowed to exempt from advertising and bidding requirements on engineering services that's set up by the state. That's just not the, you know, chance of the city of Lodi's ordinance stressing that. So I think that was a compelling point to me, and I think the fact you did do your due diligence and did understand there was inconsistent testing style from some of the others in the field. So I would support the moving that forward, as is on the consent.
Thank you.
Item, item C2, would like to just clarify and then hand it off to our interim Public Works Director that the bidder, the paying construction, did withdraw their bid on this particular item, but I'll go ahead and hand it off to Sean.
Yeah, just for a little bit more background on this one. It's been an ongoing problem for probably about a year, and we did work with our on-call roofing contractor because they also do ceiling stuff, too, a little while ago, to get a bid from them. Their, their number that they gave us just directly was in the $100,000 range. And we looked at that, and we said, no, that's, we're not comfortable doing that. So then we, we put it out to bid using our standard bid process. It's a fairly specialized thing. It's because it's actually resealing the concrete and like removing the nosing at the front of each, each one. So there's only a handful of companies that do it. We did reach out to as many people we could, as we could, to let them know it was out to bid, to try and get more bids. Unfortunately, we got two. One of them notified us and said, hey, we made a huge mistake on our bid. And, and there's provisions in the public contract code that allows them to withdraw without forfeiting their bid bond, and they met that. So we did, you know, our recommending allowed them to withdraw that bid. The second bidder is 25% lower than the previous number that we had gotten with our on-call. So that's why we feel comfortable that recommending awarding to them. So... Any questions on C2? I'm kind of going to go item by item on the next ones, but...
Oh, is that, okay, yeah.
Yes, C3 is here.
Anything else? C3, please.
I just want to comment on C2. It's a Lodi company, so there you go. I'm happy to see that as an option.
Alright, C3 is emergency. As, I didn't catch, I didn't catch your name. Gene, so as, as Gene mentioned, it, we do have two boilers. It's a redundant system. So they alternate to try and get even wear and tear. We did have one go down approximately a year ago, so we have been, we have been surviving on the other one. It's fairly band-aided, kept together, but it did go out, I think it was two, three weeks ago. It just failed, which cut off all heat to our police department, which operates 24/7, including operating a jail. We did the best we could to get dozens of portable heaters so that the different workspaces could be maintained. Unfortunately, the jail laws require that temperature to be maintained. I believe it's between 68 degrees and 80 degrees in order for us to legally hold people there, so we actually had to close down the jail. We worked with our on-call HVAC company to, to see what was available because normally large boilers or heaters of that size are weeks out. They were able to find a couple available that had a week turnaround. And so we talked to the city manager. He was, he was on board with taking this approach, and we actually were able to utilize our existing contract so we didn't have to get new insurance and that type of things that we normally have to do with a kind of a typical emergency response, use whatever contractor you want. So that allowed it to go quicker. They did install the first one a couple days ago, and so heat is back on, and the second one's scheduled to be in the next couple of days. They do have to rent a crane, so it's a big operation. It's a very large unit. So that's, that's kind of why we went about that, that route. We did have a capital improvement project planned for this one. It was probably going to go in, in the, in the springtime of this year. It wasn't the adopted budget last year. The adopted budget was $40,000 for each of these units, was our estimate. In an emergency, quickest we can get, a week turnaround, those ended up being $60,000 each, which is kind of expected on an emergency response. But when you're, you know, 24-hour police station is without heat, that's, you kind of are limited options. So we, we didn't have the luxury of waiting, I don't know how many months that would have been, probably three or four months until our, our CIP could have gone out to bid and gone that route. But it's kind of just what has to happen in an emergency. So that's kind of why we handled that one in that manner. Any questions on C3?
Just actually, to PD, how down, how long was the jail down, and what does that mean? Did we have to take... Did we have to take prisoners over to the county, or how do you, how do you handle that when you're dealing with that?
Hi, Captain Verstig from the, from the Police Department. Sean's exactly right, the jail did go down because the temperature was too low. It was closed for that entire duration, about two to three weeks. So, what we have to do instead is we have to transport inmates out to San Joaquin County. It's about an hour for the transport back and forth. And then, that time period that we have to wait for booking is quite a bit longer too. So, what goes from, can be as fast as a 15 to 20-minute booking here in the city. We're losing an officer to an hour and a half to two hours, so it significantly affects our manpower, our resources, and ability to provide services within the city.
I appreciate that clarification, thank you.
C5?
C5, so, this one's specific to an on-call contract. And we kind of look at on-calls a little different than like capital ones in that we tend to advertise them as a multi-year contract, especially one like this that has to do with like regulatory filings. It takes companies a little while to get up to speed on all the components of, in this case, like our storm drain system. And so, if you were to do a new one every year, you got a lot of wasted time and energy getting up to speed. So, we tend to do them multi-year, and then typically, like in the case of this one, in the proposal, in the bid, whatever, whichever type of project it is, we'll have extensions as an option in the contract, if agreeable to the city and the contractor. So, that's kind of, that's pretty typical on all our annual or on-call contracts. And then typically, the first, the first base contract might be a two-year or three-year, and then they'll typically have a two, you know, two-one-year optional extensions. So, that's pretty commonplace, and this kind of fits into that general one.
And just to build on that, and the specific questions on 5, 6, and 7, was the fact that these are amendments, and how long can we amend something before going out to bid again, or seek proposals? And we do have a five-year provision within our code, so that when an agreement goes beyond a five-year period, at that point, we do go out and solicit additional refreshes of the proposal, bid, whatever like that. So, while these are professional services and different things, they are amendments and structured the way Sean described. Once we hit that five-year mark, we go out again and reassess the market.
Thank you, Sean.
Any questions on C5?
I think we're good, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion on all items on consent except for C6.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion passes, thank you. C6, entertain a motion.
I would approve.
Second. Motion passes. Up next, comments by public on non-agenda items, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. The first comment card I have is for Stephen Sekula.
Hi, I've spoken to council before, my name is Stephen Sekula. I own three properties on North Sacramento Street, and they're currently leased long-term by Merritt Woodwork. And they're immediately across the street from the Salvation Army and the new Temporary Access Center and the in-construction permanent facility. And as much good work as Salvation Army and the Access Center do, which is frequently publicized, the impact on the neighborhood is getting dire again. And I monitor the street daily, keeping an eye on what's going on over there. And there are people camping in their cars overnight, there were five vehicles today. There are repeat vehicles that show up, leave and show up. When I call on emergency with Lodi PD, they're very prompt in sending people out to investigate. But, it seems like a revolving door situation there. Twice this week, we've had to move people off the front steps of one of my buildings, so the Merritt employees could enter the property. The old Tokai Glass building was broken into yesterday, the plate glass windows in the front were smashed out. That parking lot has become sort of a gathering area for people, collects trash, et cetera, et cetera. My concern is that as much as we need these facilities in the city, the impact on the surrounding neighborhood is being underestimated. There are lots and lots of promises that the impact would be minor, that the streets would be clean, that there would be security, and that there would be a steady presence of law enforcement. And I'm not seeing that happening. And as we go closer to the date that the permanent facility opens, I urge all of you to look very carefully at ways to combine services between Lodi PD, DPW, Safety Ambassadors, and try to get this situation corrected. If the Safety Ambassadors are indeed patrolling on an every 20-minute basis, as they're reported to be doing on Sacramento Street, they would be seeing the same thing that I'm seeing. People sleeping in front of buildings, cars with trash piled around them, and people inside all day long. And just unacceptable conditions for doing business in the neighborhood. My large fear is that my tenants will decide not to renew their lease. And they will not stay in Lodi, they won't find another property. They'll move out of town, they don't have the patience for this inside of their business plan. And that's roughly 40 to 50 jobs, all of them Lodi residents with a few exceptions. And the economic impact of losing that many employees is pretty significant to a city like Lodi. So, I urge you to take a look at this, get together with everyone, see what you can do to make it happen. I call frequently to Lodi PD, the homeless liaison officer, Officer Shadman, I believe. And I'm doing my best to keep on top of it, but it's really not my job to fix this. So, that's what I have to say, thank you.
Sir, Captain Verstig, would you mind sidebaring with this gentleman afterwards here? And then, we'd love to get a, report it back on just some of the requested information there. If you, if you wouldn't mind sidebaring with Captain Verstig, hopefully we could figure this out, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might actually ask too, is I know we have the parking permits there, so I had seen the pictures, Ms. Sekula, of the RV that's parking there. I know that's an ongoing concern, so perhaps you can talk with Captain Verstig about how that's being monitored as well, thank you.
And sorry, I missed, Councilmember Bregman, did you have a comment?
I did have a question for staff, what is the update on our Safety Ambassador program? I know there was a little bit of movement in the last year on what we're thinking about doing, can you go over that?
I am happy to present you the details at your mid-year budget discussions. I have spoken to a number of you about some thoughts that we have related to that, and to increase that effectiveness, and that mid-year discussion would be a great opportunity to talk about that.
Great, thank you. And it would be nice to possibly get some type of update on a couple streets in specific. So, number one, east of Beckman Street on Lodi Avenue, that's a major hotspot right now. And number two would be Sacramento Street. If we can get some type of very small action plan about increasing enforcement, one thing I've realized while being on council, hotspots come and they go. But if these are current hotspots, then it'd be great to get them knocked out, thank you.
Councilmember Naginishi?
We have the homeless committee, I see the agenda, right? Are these presented to them at all, or is this...
Is anyone, is anyone here who does the homeless committee? I don't know.
I'm going to look over to, yeah, to Jennifer, if you wouldn't mind, the Committee on Homelessness and their involvement on abatement issues, that would be helpful for all of us to understand better.
Mayor Protam and council members, so we do regularly go to the Lodi Committee on Homelessness, there's always usually a city representative there. And there are regular updates on kind of what's going on and what we're seeing out in that area. The Lodi Committee on Homelessness unfortunately does not have any enforcement abilities. However, we do have outreach team members that are constantly out there talking to individuals on Sacramento Street, as well as we're looking at opportunities to condense resources in that area with our ambassador program, as well in the interim, as we're looking at items. Lodi Committee on Homelessness is updated every month on kind of what's kind of going on in that area and what we're seeing. From both shelter directors, so both Hope Harbor and the Access Center report regularly on kind of what's going on. We also have a community liaison officer report that goes to them as well, kind of what they've seen in enforcement, what they've seen in success stories, what they've seen in kind of increased areas of concern as well. So, those reports do go there, and we also post them on the city website under the Lodi Committee on Homelessness as well.
Councilmember Bregman?
I do believe we have one representative from the Committee on Homelessness here in the room today. I will also be there tomorrow, and it might be nice to be able to communicate some of this information in the sense of their ability isn't one of an official city capacity, but what they do have is Salvation Army, Access Center contractor, and other social workers that can hopefully, again, take loops around Sacramento Street to get people out of doorways, clean up the streets, which the Access Center used to be in charge of. So, I'm sure there's some communication. I will be at that meeting tomorrow, and I will bring up all the information and have James send out an email. If he obliges, thank you.
And Member Bregman, I do want to share that our Access Center Director has been meeting with a lot of the residents there and providing his personal number as well to, as a point of contact, just to be kind of proactive in some of those areas of concern as well. So, they are making efforts towards that, it's just not an overnight fix unfortunately.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Oh, sir.
Sorry, well, Captain Verstig, I'm Captain Kent with the Police Department. I figured trying to update you a little bit on some of the ongoing stuff, even today. As we talked about CLO Shadman, unfortunately, he was pulled from some of his duties for the prior weeks with some of the investigations that were going on, but he was back at it this week. They did a cleanup, actually today, I got photos of Lodi Avenue being cleaned up out there for a cleanup, where two vehicles were posted and should be, hopefully, if they're still there on the ninth, for abatement, will be towed. In addition, he was out there doing a cleanup on Sacramento Street to also clean up that today. So, we are working on it immediately and working on our end, just to give you guys updates that we are aware and working on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Kent. Any other public comments?
Mr. Armando Valerio.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, Hothi, and council members. My name is Armando Valerio, I'm a Delta College trustee for Area 5, and I just wanted to come out here and introduce myself to all you Lodians. I have been trying to go to as many council meetings, supervisor meetings, even in my area. So, I, my area is east of 99 Freeway, north to Dillard Road, and east San Joaquin County, and half of Calaveras County, and south to Escalon. So, I have about, more or less, 1,300 square miles that I cover, about 115,000 constituents, which I covered all. And I work full-time, so it's hard to cover all those areas. But, trying to get out there and show my face, here's who I am, kind of go on my own mini-listening tour to get some insight as far as people, how we can improve Delta College. Just to give you some statistics about Delta College, so the number of students who take classes online or in person is about 26,000. Certificates and degrees, we have about 239 that we offer. The number of students who are first in families to go to Delta College is about 47%. Delta covers in all about 2,300 square miles, which are larger than states of Rhode Island and Delaware. So, we're pretty active out there, and we're just trying to improve what we do at Delta College. But, wanted to introduce myself, also I have a resource guide that I'll give to your clerk here, some, about some programs that we have. I'll give you some of my business cards as well. And then, my other hat is about three years ago, I'm a physical therapist and I work with disabled children in San Joaquin County, physically disabled children, Zero 21. And we have a lot of kids who go to Shriners. So, Shriners does a lot of wonderful work in this community, so I wanted to reach out to see what we could do with Shriners. So, we got together and decided to do a fundraiser, so we did our first fundraiser three years ago at Oak Farms Winery, and we're going to do it again this year at Oak Farms Winery on April 26. And I have flyer here for information, if you guys are interested in that as well. So, thank you for your time, appreciate what you guys do. Appreciate you as elected officials as well, because I know it takes a lot of time and energy, especially preparing for meetings, thank you.
I might actually ask for a follow-up.
Oh, yes.
My, I'm in the Lodi Tokai Rotary, we had an excellent presentation by the San Joaquin Building Trades Council about the work that they're doing, and they mentioned working more closely with Delta College.
Yes.
I don't know how familiar you are with their program, but I think it's a great opportunity and certainly hope that Delta will continue to work very closely with them because they've done remarkable work in getting people trained and into jobs and getting good wages for their work.
Yes, we work very closely with them, yes. Because we're all in it together, right? We need to educate our community best we can, you know, anywhere from the high school students to the mature students versus the seniors, the whole spectrum of education is what we need to cover, we're trying to do the best we can. So, any insight that you guys have, you have my business card, please contact me, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Valerio, appreciate how communicative you've been, and looking forward to continued partnership with Delta College. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Comments by council on non-agenda items?
Let's have one.
Yes.
I, I was great, it was great to see another grant presented tonight. I'd ask if the city clerk's office can get us a update on where we are with any pending grant requests. I'd like those individuals to get some decisions made for them, or if not, at least to know that they have until the end of this fiscal year for consideration of their grant requests, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings, item F1?
Thank you. Item F1 is a public hearing to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Lodi Municipal Code, Chapter 15.44, off-site improvements and dedications by updating Section 15.44.040, exemption of deferment. And I will turn it over to Sean Nathan.
Thanks, Maria, you saved me the hassle for reading that, so I appreciate that. We're going to have a very quick presentation here, once it gets on there. All right, that's the whole slide. So, there's a follow-up to the November 19th meeting, where we talked about our off-site improvements. And so, we talked about the threshold currently for a building permit that triggers the required for those dedications is $75,400. And council provided direction to staff to start the process of increasing that to $150,000. That's exactly what this is. Some of the numbers might look funny, because it was originally put in place in 1992. So, in 1992, that threshold was $25,000, and that's since grown three times, since that time to that $75,000. So, we're basically just striking out that old number, replacing it with a new one, striking out the old engineer news record cost index, and replacing it with a new one. So, with that, open up to questions.
Questions from council?
Yeah.
Councilmember Naginishi?
My understanding is, if it's more than $150,000, you let it go, is that right?
The other way around, if, if the building, if the building permit is less than $150,000, then we, we're not going to require them to do any improvements to their frontage. If it's over $150,000, then that, that's going to trigger those requirements.
You're talking about sidewalks and pipes?
Not necessarily pipes, curb gutters, sidewalk, damaging, if sidewalks damaged or not ADA compliant, they'll be required to upgrade those.
Yeah, I, when I heard, I support this.
Any other council questions, comments? Seeing none.
Just a, just a quick comment before you vote, I just wanted to thank the city council. Streamlining the permit process has been among the top priorities the council's had, and this is a definitive action that is being taken that will significantly reduce the time it takes to get a building permit for projects that are underneath this value. So, doubling this amount of money not only saves the time, but will allow staff to allocate resources elsewhere. So, I just wanted to thank you for that.
Go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:45 PM. Deputy City Clerk, or do we have any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:45 PM. And I'll, if there's no council comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I didn't get my screen. I'm a yes.
Let's, well, let's, we'll have to do a roll call. It didn't show up on his screen.
We can just have the record reflect that he verbally voted yes.
Thank you. I'd also like to state for the record that Mayor Protem, for Hothi's votes are appearing as mayor because that's his, his typical seat. But it'll be showing under, under his.
Perfect. Thank you. Motion passes. Next item, F2?
F2 is a public hearing to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Lodi Municipal Code, Chapter two point one-two, city manager, by revising section two point one-two point zero five zero removal. And I will turn it over to interim city manager, James Lindsay.
Thank you very much. This is an item that the city council had requested that we look into, given the recent experience you've had with this code section. And so the changes to the code before you this evening changed the removal process to what is a thirty-day plus process for removal of the city manager, and reduces that to a ten-day process. Additionally, we are recommending a provision that allows an additional time period of ninety days directly following a city council election, whereby it would require a larger voting threshold to remove a city manager at will. And that is a four-fifth vote. So again, during the normal course of a year, the removal time period window has gone from thirty to ten days with these changes. If there is a desire to remove a city manager directly following a city council election, ninety days, that ninety-day period would require a four-fifths vote. So with that, we offer up any comments or questions of staff?
Council questions? Seeing none. I will open the public hearing at seven forty-eight PM. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I do not.
Seeing none. I will close the public hearing at seven forty-eight PM. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion passes. Item H1, under ordinances?
For item H1, the first ordinance is the sec, the second reading of ordinance number twenty thirty-five, which was introduced on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, to repeal and replace Lodi Municipal Code, Section thirteen point two zero point zero two zero, Energy Theft Diversion Field Services Fee Recovery. It is recommended that council waive further readings in full and adopt ordinance number twenty thirty-five.
Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. Any council comments? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
For item H2, this is the second reading of ordinance number twenty thirty-six, which was introduced on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, to amend Lodi Municipal Code, Title One, General Provisions, Chapter one point one zero Administrative Enforcement Provision, and Title Six, Animals. Section six point zero four point zero three zero, Redemption of Impounded Animals. Chapter six point zero eight, Prohibited Animals. Section six point one two point zero one zero, License Required. Section six point one two point zero six zero, Vaccination Required Certificate Exemptions. Section six point one two point zero seven zero, Business of Breeding or Raising. Section six point one two point one one zero, Animal Noise. Section six point one two point one two zero, Animals at Large. Section six point one two one five zero, Mandatory Microchipping of Dogs and Cats. Section six point one four point zero two zero, Sanitation of Premises. Section six point one four point zero three zero, Removal of Animal Waste. Section six point one four point zero five zero, Management of Cat Population Permitted Acts. Section six point one five point zero one zero, Definitions. And sections, section six point one five point zero two zero, Behavior Prohibited. It is recommended that council waive further readings in full and adopt ordinance number twenty thirty-six.
Do we have any public comments? Seeing none. Council comments?
Yes, I do, yeah.
Councilmember Nakaneishi?
I'm gonna be, uh, micromanage, not micromanage. Specifically, I'd like to know Vaccination Required Certificate Exemptions. Six and six, twelve, oh, six, zero. Can you, can you read that?
Councilmember Nakaneishi, the amendment to this section just adds that a violation will be an infraction, subject to enforcement penalty under Chapter one-ten. So just referencing back to where the enforcement authority is. So it's kind of just a, a, a reference back on where, where it would follow from. So no change to the substance of that section.
I understand. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Seeing no further. Council comments, ma'am? Do you have a public comment on this item?
Yes.
Yes, please?
Yes, my name is Maria. But I know happy in Lodi for the dogs, the people using for rituals. That's not good. They, they call California, they hack call, they kill animals. That's not good. That's the problem in Lodi. A lot of people use their animals, use the, the dogs for the rituals. That's not good.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
For item H3, this is the second reading of ordinance number twenty thirty-seven, twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine, twenty forty, twenty forty-one, twenty forty-two, and twenty forty-three. Of the twenty twenty-five California Building Code, California Existing Building Code, Mechanical Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Residential Code, Green Building Standing, Standard Code, and Fire Code Recovery, Fee Recovery. It is recommended that council waive further readings in full and adopt ordinance number twenty thirty-seven, twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine, twenty forty, twenty forty-one, twenty forty-two, and twenty forty-three.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none. Council comments?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion passes. Yeah, that, less than an hour. Any other order of business to discuss? With that, I'll adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-four PM.
That's your MO, dude.